October 12th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. God, our hearts are heavy, Lord, for those within our system, Lord, those within our country, our state, God, who have lost loved ones, tragedies, Lord. Sickness is gone, you know, the troubles that we all have, Lord. We pray, God, for our guidance, Lord. We pray for comfort for all these people, Lord, for everybody impacted, Lord. And God, it's not in man's hands, God, but it is in your hands, Lord, to give peace and comfort. God, we pray for all of our leaders, Lord, across this country, across this county, Lord. Give us knowledge, Lord, and guidance to do what we need to do. I just pray for all of our school leaders, Lord, administrators, our children, families, parents. We ask God that you'd go with us through this meeting and give us peace that we need and the knowledge that we need to continue on. We ask these favors in Jesus's name. Amen.
With allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next out will be the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Knoll, second by Mrs. Lewis. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next will be the recognition of the 2018 Pickens County School System Teacher of the Year Representatives.
You know, I believe this is the, one of the two greatest times that we have in our school system is when we recognize and honor student achievement and we recognize and honor excellence in teaching. And we've got seven excellent teachers this year, and we'd like to present them with a little gift. And we've got school names on already. Ms. Claire Pannadussy.
Ms. Kabley Karen from Pickens County Middle School.
Next, we're going to this great award, all of our schools. We're chartered by two agencies with Georgia Accrediting and then, of course, with SACS. And this is our Georgia Accrediting Commission. It actually says that this is certified, that the educational program in this particular one, Harmony Elementary School K-5, has met all the necessary standards to be accredited with quality for this past fiscal year or so. Harmony? Jasper Elementary School Accredited with Quality. Tate Elementary School Accredited with Quality. Jasper Middle School Accredited with Quality. Pickens County Middle School Accredited with Quality.
Next, out will be public participation. Ms. Clem.
Hello. My name is Wendy Clemble. I've been a member of the Pickens County community and a hopeful activist for change in schools since 2013. I've never spoken to the board, but I feel slightly misunderstood and there are important things happening that I feel need to be addressed. I was not born and raised in Pickens County, but Pickens County is my forever home. I have never lived in such a passionate place, in a place filled with so much talent and heart. I'm a dragon through and through. In the last four years, I have worked with many of our amazing educators to make a difference in the lives of students, and I'm grateful for those that are open to working with me. Unfortunately, my first experience with this school was not one that was well-received. During one of my visits, I was asked to attend a meeting with one of my friends. She was requesting a 504 for her daughter who had severe anxiety. Even though she had the documentation from a psychiatrist and a list of the necessary accommodations, the school refused to create the 504 because the child looked normal at school. Back then, I don't know what the dynamics were between the Special Education Department and the central office and the schools, but I could not get it worked out, it couldn't get worked out internally. So, we were forced to file an Office of Civil Rights complaint due to the violation of this child's rights. From that complaint, the county was made to rewrite the 504 process and educate all staff on 504s and procedure. A lot of good came from that. A lot of good learning for everybody came from that 504 process, and today, the 504 process is easily accessed, utilized, and effective. Very shortly after that time, I began to question the leaders about the reading programs used with our special education population. I knew several high school students struggling to read, and there was a lack of direct instruction in that area. Reading is a life skill. Our current crisis involves the fact that there are children in the special education world of Pickens County that are not being taught to read. There are many children throughout all of our schools that are not learning to read. My son is one of them. He sat at Hill City for six years and came out of there not knowing how to read. One of the things that I find most frustrating is that we're using one reading program, Word in Gillingham. One program does not work for all children. I know of another student who sat at Hill City for three years not being able to read, and finally, I decided to take her on as a tutoring client this summer. I use a program called corrective reading, which is research-based direct instruction. I have had a lot of success with this program in the past. It's structured, repetitive, and focused on all the skills that are missing. It may not work for all kids, but for this kid, it has worked. So, what the school hasn't been able to do in three years, I was able to accomplish in six weeks. I once believed perhaps there was something in these children's brains that were making it very super difficult for them to learn how to read. That was not the case. It's what we're doing at a school level that's keeping them from reading, so we seriously need to look at what we're doing. With my own son, I'm frustrated because the program that didn't work all those years in elementary school, guess what program they're using in middle school? Yeah, the same program. And even more than that, I asked for data so we can see growth, and there's no reliable data. The job of a teacher is to use the intervention for three to four weeks. During that time, progress monitors, so that after three or four weeks is over, you can look at your data and see if your intervention is working. If it's not working, you need to find something else. What's happening in our schools is we're using one program, we're not progress monitoring in an effective way, and children are not learning. A lot of times, I find that the schools are focusing on the goals that are in the IEP only. The IEP does not address the whole child, and teaching a child's side words does not teach them how to read. We need to take a serious look at what we are doing. I began talking about this in August, and it's now October, and I don't think anything has changed. These kids cannot afford to lose any more time. Another aspect of our schools that needs to be looked at is trauma. As we have experienced yet again in Pickens County, we're not immune to tragedy. In the same way, we're not immune to trauma. Trauma is only increasing, and we, as a school system, need to get on board with what that looks like and what it means. Pickens County is probably the most progressive place I've ever lived when it comes to being trauma-informed. We have the Pickens Family Connection, which is a nonprofit that pulls a bunch of resources together and talks about trauma impacting our community. They meet every month. I know Whitney Karnes is part of that organization. What I don't know is how close Whitney Karnes works with Dr. Goodman. But really, we need to get this trauma-informed environment out to all of our staff, because what's happening is we see kids who act differently, and we immediately want to separate them into another setting or isolate them in ISS. And that's not exactly what needs to happen. So, we need our staff to be trauma-informed, and I would even do that before we talk about putting up a guard station. So, instead of making our schools feel more like prison, let's look at what's going on. If you're having an issue with truancy or kids skipping class, then let's make our attendance calls real-time. That's better practice anyway, because God forbid something happens to one of our children on the way to school, nobody's going to know about it until it's too late. If we have money to spend, let's spend that money on getting all of our school staff trauma-informed. We're very lucky to have amazing resources at our disposal. We already have exemplary educators like Kelly Flat, Kristy Bone, Penny Fowler, and Dr. Flat. We lost Mary Smith, she was a counselor at PCMS, but she was a great example of a trauma-informed educator. What makes these educators different is they look at the child, they include the family, they listen to, and they work together to create what is necessary and what is in the best interest of the child. Education has been very much, it's become a numbers game, and there are humans behind these numbers, humans that you can all advocate for in the way that Pickens County Middle School advocated for my son. They made a huge difference in his healing, and I'm incredibly grateful for that. I hope you know that I'm your number-one supporter. I love the things I hear going on in our county, and I think it's also important to look at what's not working, get in there and fix it, because we can do better and we should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Next out will be superintendent reports.
The first one on the list is about our architectural firm, which I will ask for approval in the action items. So, we're going to go down to the next one, which is financial update. Ms. Smith.
I don't know if y'all have noticed, Martha's not here tonight, and has taken two of us to do her job while she's not. So, as soon as we have this put up, I'll review our general fund. For the period ending October 9th, 2017, our budgeted revenue, we've collected 6.81%. Don't panic, I'll just remind everybody, at this point in the year, a lot of our July and August revenue was either QBE that was to be applied toward FY '17 or property taxes that are backed into FY '17. So, it's normal for it to be this low, we're right where we should be, so no worries there. We have expended 15.13% of our budgeted expenditures. If you'll notice in the encumbrance, oh, there's quite a large number in basically open POs. So, those are things we've committed to purchase but have not received a bill for. So, this time of year, we have a lot of expense up front, getting school running, resupplying all the schools, maintenance, transportation, and all the different departments. So, again, no worries, we're good to go. So, do y'all have questions on this report? I will have a report for you. We did get our final FY '17 required reporting done for '17. It was submitted on Monday, and it was accepted Monday afternoon, thank goodness. So, we have closed officially, so we will have an official total for y'all. I usually present that in a one-page presentation, just like I do when we do the budget approval. So, I'll try to have that for you. This week's been a little hectic, lots of folks in and out, so we will have it for you at the next meeting, though. For the month of September, we collected revenue of $387,676.12, earned interest of We only issued two checks. We had the air conditioning units at Tate and Pickens High School that I believe Mr. Gilliland had spoken to you about in the past, and then the surveying that had to do with JESGIM changes that are being proposed. Our balance at the end of, and that should say September, was $8,687,388.22. Please do remember, that is a combination of SPOS 4 and 5. So, do y'all have questions on this report? And then our final report, just an update on where we are with SPOS 5. And I don't know if y'all noticed just yet, but those numbers are up quite a bit from that $342,000 average we had in the prior year. Really pleased to see that. I have not, of course, the department revenue is not great about sharing with me who's paying more taxes here. I have talked to a few folks that said car sales are doing well. That is our number-one thing in Pickens County that does drive that revenue. So, when they say they're doing well, that number does typically go up. So, if they will ever share information with me, I'll be sure to pass it on, but we'll take those checks they send us. Do y'all have questions?
We just need to encourage everybody to buy a car.
Yes.
Locally.
Locally.
Thanks for having Ms. Canton. With our attendance report.
You'll bear with me for just a few minutes, I've got several great awards to give away tonight. I'm so excited to be here, as always, to introduce some special people who are here tonight. First of all, I want to award the school that had the highest attendance for the month. If we could look at, we'll let it out. Patrick. Congratulations Jasper Middle School, Anita Walker. Did you bring the banner? She did receive the banner last month and does get to keep the banner. I did not call her and tell her that she didn't have to take it down, because I wanted her to take it down to bring it in, so she could get her picture made again. So, Anita, please come forward. Mr. Young, would you please help Anita Walker hold the banner, sir? Since you're the closest. So, congratulations, Jasper Middle School, Anita Walker. Did you bring the banner? She did receive the banner last month and does get to keep the banner. I did not call her and tell her that she didn't have to take it down, because I wanted her to take it down to bring it in, so she could get her picture made again. So, Anita, please come forward. Mr. Young, would you please help Anita Walker hold the banner, sir? Since you're the closest. So, congratulations, if you look at 97.31%. All of our schools, 95% or above, which is great. That is where we want to be all year long. Updates you real quickly on the dropout report, we're looking at two. We had one to add for the month of September. We were able to get a couple of our students back in from the August report, so again, we're holding it two. So, we're very proud that we were able to get some of them back into the, back into the school system. Any questions on this report? We'll go now to the high staff attendance. Congratulations to Jasper Elementary School, 97%. Dr. David Wiles. And, Dr. Wiles, if you would have your, you have some staff here with you tonight, if you, teachers, students, staff, would all please come up, please? I want to go ahead and just make this announcement, because we were going to do this, but I'm going to do it since the high staff attendance, I thought it would be a great time to get everybody up. Y'all go ahead and come on up. Jasper Elementary School had the honor of receiving the highest school attendance award for last year, the 2016-17 school year, 96.18%. I want to thank Dr. Wiles for honoring his school by giving all the students and staff a T-shirt that will be worn throughout the school year with great honor. And also, Dr. Wiles, we would like to recognize you and your staff. The T-shirt, you guys can't see the back, but it says, "Be here every day, all day, all the way. Attendance counts, Tiger Nation." So, everybody give him a big round of applause. So, we're very excited for them, and we know that you're going to wear those shirts all year long. We appreciate you guys. And what's a good word?
Go Tigers.
Go Tigers. Absolutely. Yes. No, not with me. Yeah.
This was small. Too hard.
Great job. Thank you so much. All right, if I could get my assistant, Cory. He's volunteered to help me out tonight. All right, tonight, I have the honor of recognizing the amazing group of business individuals, leaders throughout our community, judges, and who have made a commitment to instill in all Pickens County students, every school day counts. Building good habits of attendance assists students in their preparation for success in school and in life. Your financial contribution was a smashing success in placing a huge smile on 400-plus students that received Perfect Attendance T-shirts, and in addition, your contribution played a part in helping to honor Jasper Elementary with the T-shirts that they just received. On behalf of the Pickens County School District, our superintendent, our board, we would like to say thank you, and we look forward to your continued partnership in creating our school system that we feel like that our community deserves. As a quote from Dr. Carlton Wilson, "Together we can create greatness," and we are working on it every day. So, as we call your names, if you'll please come forward and be recognized. We have Chattahoochee Technical College. Is David Simmons here?
He is not here, but I'll accept it.
Okay. Thank you. Just give him a round of applause. We have United Community Bank, Tiffany Gleason. Is Tiffany here? You guys are going to have to remain standing, because you know we're going to have to have your picture, so you might as well. We have Good Samaritan, we have Lois Bryant and Myrna Denson. We have Kirk Garner with Garner Ace Hardware. We also want to thank Kirk, he is our Perfect Attendance Banner sponsor. He makes sure that we have that banner that we give away every month, and we're proud to display his, thanks on his behalf. We have Community Bank of Pickens County. Anyone here? Okay. Green Heating and Air could not be here. We wanted to recognize Commissioner Jones, he could not be here tonight. Also, George and Brenda Weaver could not be here tonight. Jennifer Jordan, Clerk of Court, she could not be here tonight. Judge John Wischer, is he here?
He's got a hearing.
Okay. Judge Jan Whaler. We have Chief Magistrate Judge, Alan Wigginton. And I want to thank Alan, too, also, because Alan handles our magistrate, helps us with our truancy, and he is, all I can say is Alan is a blessing to our school system to have him. And Dr. Wilson, we were blessed to have him there for a while, but now, we have an extra-special blessing to have him as our superintendent. So, we want to thank you for what you do. A lot of school systems don't place a huge emphasis on the judicial system as far as school attendance, but we have a unique judicial system that everybody within this system believes that, you know, being in school is a huge part of a student's receiving and education. And so, we just want to thank them for the commitment that they continue to play. Thank you, Judge Wigginton, we appreciate you very much. Thank you, Judge Wigginton, we appreciate you very much. And then we also want to thank Sharp Mountain Graphics, who actually was part of helping with our Perfect Attendance T-shirts, who would be Jerry Greer. So again, we want to give all these people a big round of applause. And we also want you to know that on the back of these shirts, as part of your commitment, your sponsorship is also on all of the Jasper Elementary, 500 and something T-shirts that was printed. So part of your donations went to help with this as well. So thank you, you doubly have blessed us. Going to ask Dr. Wilds to step in. Do you want, you want one on the end with, holding it the other way? Hang on, David.
Or if I just stand in the middle?
Oh, let me get Daniel a little this way. Thank you so much.
While these folks are getting back to their seats, I would like to say that one of the things that makes our community and our schools so special is the kind of support we get from our business and judicial leaders and all of the rest of the community. We appreciate so much what you do for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Stacy, operations report.
Evening, Cheryl. Gave everybody something. Make this, we're, daily, we're very busy. We have a lot of work orders this time of year, but the main thing we're doing now is we're preparing for winter, you know, starting to winterize buildings, get things ready, and swap over to cooling, which we thought was going to happen two weeks ago, but it kind of turned about-face on us. So we're in that transition. Transportation, I'm excited to say, we had two drivers apply that already had their CDL with passenger endorsement, and all they had to do is take a week's or three days' training with us to go through our training and to get updated. And so they will be coming on board soon, and we had one person go through the entire training, and she will be tested soon, and we will have three new drivers, which we really need, desperate this time of year for field trips and athletic events and things like that. So we're excited about that. We did place a bus at the Marvel Festival, and we manned it with our drivers and our trainers to talk safety and to try to encourage anyone that wanted to to apply, and we just gave them an overall glimpse of it, and it's scary when you look at all the training, but we tried to convince them that if some of these drivers that were there could do it, anybody could do it. That was their joke the whole time, they were telling me, "If I can do it, y'all can do it." So we did have some interest, we had about four applications filled out there and several taken home. We hope to, I hate we didn't get two days in or a Sunday day in, too. And we gave out balloons to the kids and face painted, and it was a good, fun time for them. Bus Driver Appreciation Day is October 16th, and we will be having a breakfast at Transportation for all the drivers. We welcome any of you to come, Dr. Wilson, you too, will be there, we'll start serving around 7:30 as they come in off the route. So it'll be, you know, an hour, hour and a half-long process to feed them home because they don't all come in at the same time. We should show up if you can. And the week of October 16th through the 20th is Bus Safety Week nationally, so we will be doing some things at each school for that, and I think all the schools recognize them, too. Sheriff's Report. Pickens High School, we have one arrest for disorderly conduct, public intoxication contributing to delinquency of a minor, and one arrest for unruly juvenile. Two citations issued for parent responsibility for truancy. We had a little special detail, and it was in the paper, we had a canine search, had four dogs, and several agencies came out and helped. Entire school went through the whole thing, it's a major process. It's really neat to see it done and see the work and the training and all, it was very professionally done. We appreciate the Sheriff's Office for doing this, and SROs especially. Had one, found one small amount of marijuana, so that was a good thing, in my opinion, if we do it and we don't find anything, we're doing something right. So one little, one little pouch of marijuana wasn't bad at all. Beth's not here tonight, she is at a training, and she'll be bringing some information next week. She's at the local conference, the School Nutrition Conference in Athens. We do have one award tonight, and I haven't told anybody, but this is the first Clean School Award this year. We gave them a month because they started school, they should have been clean, for sure. So we had a three-way tie, but we went with a tiebreaker of the Most Improved, and Cory Harmony, you're the winner. Will come by, we'll bring each of your employees a certificate and take their picture and all, and they'll get a bonus from maybe, so just let them know that y'all, y'all own it, that's it.
Thank you, sir. We've got a last-minute special grant that just came in, and Dr. Gilliland's going to tell us about it.
We are so impressed. The Governor's Office of Student Achievement has a Tiny Grant Award, and they awarded six grants for the whole state. And so we, at Pickens High School, decided that we were going to write for a Tiny Grant for our intellectually disabled students so that they could continue their dragon snacks that they do for communication and to help them prepare for the real world. They prepare snacks, and they deliver them, and they help with their communications, and they helped, they're actually a small business. They have to compute how much snacks they need, how much money they have, they keep the books. And so I would like to present Daria Schmidt and Diane Hicks. Is Daria here? Did she have to leave? Diane, would you please come up? They were one of six recipients for the State of Georgia for a Tiny Grant Award. Diane, come and talk to them about what you do with dragon snacks. And we call it the Dragon Table, and talk about what you're going to do. We said, "Now that we got the money, we have to, we have to deliver."
Please, and tell them to spit out. What Daria and I decided, we sat down and decided the things that we felt like our students needed. And, you know, we, we teach academics, but our big push is to get these students ready for adult lives. So we looked at everything, and that's why we called it the Dragon Table. We kind of laid everything out, and then we had to decide how we were going to connect all that. And we decided that one of the ways that we would have to connect it is through technology. So that was going to be the center. What we built everything under was the technology that we'll use to let teachers order things, and we're going to sell plants and planter boxes we're going to build. We're going to, right now, we're already doing smoothies for the faculty. The greenhouse? Yes, well, we're planting flowers and we're growing things to put in the planter boxes. We're doing a system for hire where we go and do office work, like filing, we sharpen pencils for testing, we've sent, we pick up the packages that are delivered and take them if they're to teachers, we take them out to the teachers, and we're excited to get some money and expand all this.
And part of this is, it was related to STEM. All of this was related to the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and that was what was so exciting. We were the only special ed group that was awarded a grant in the whole state of Georgia. So I was so excited that they did this, and it was a lot of work on their part, and they worked all summer long on this grant to get it in, and so I really want to congratulate them. It was $6,500 that they received.
That is awesome. Mr. Superintendent, I conclude. I'm Mr. Chairman, I'm superintendent. Mr. Chairman, I conclude the superintendent's report.
Next item will be some action items. First will be, Dr. Wilson, you want to discuss the architectural firm?
Yes, I would like to ask the board to approve our architectural firm of the Drow and Associates for our county architectural firm for upcoming projects.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve Rowan Associates as the architectural firm for upcoming projects.
I move that we approve Rowan Associates to be our architect for upcoming projects.
Second. Motion by Ms. Finley, second by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be approval of minutes from the September 14th regular board meeting. I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do y'all agree on the motion to go into executive session? If y'all could amend the motion, delete that portion of the minutes, I'd say you went into executive session to discuss with legal counsel, since I wasn't in. I think Long would probably just repeat what we normally put up.
And I'll just redact that motion and make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 14th regular board meeting with the, with the executive session portion taken out referring to legal counsel.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as corrected?
I've already made the motion.
Okay, I second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be approval of surplus from Hill City and Tate. Do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus from Hill City and Tate.
Motion by Mrs. White, second. Second by Mr. Long, any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be to go into executive session. I will make a move, motion that we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the school district or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. Your second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. White, any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. 7:56 PM, a motion was made by Mrs. Lewis, seconded by Mrs. White, to come out of executive session, no action was taken. I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
Mrs. White, you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long, any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next item will be the approval of personnel, I hear a motion to approve Personnel Action Report as presented.
I move that we approve the Personnel Action Report as presented.
Motion by Ms. Finley, your second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next is board comments, any board comments?
College's, it's an alarm, it wasn't my phone, I had it turned off.
She had the alarm set for the meeting to be over.
And we did.
Next item we need to adjourn, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Long?
I'll second.
Second, let's vote. Second by Ms. Finley, any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, carries, we are adjourned.